And welcome, everybody. It is my honor and privilege to reconvene the June 5th Parker Town Council meeting at 7:12 PM. Council, if you would, please sign in. Do we need to hit? Okay, there we go. All council members are present with the exception of Councilwoman Debbie Lewis, who is absent tonight. Audience members, you'll notice the big board up here. This is where you can see how council members vote. You'll notice the next to my name, a green light went on which says I'm here, but that'll be the only time you see that go on tonight because in Parker, your mayor by ordinance or by, excuse me, by charter does not vote on items. The mayor of the town of Parker's a non-voting member. These six members are elected at large to serve all of Parker, and they're the ones who do get to vote on things. So when you see my light don't turn, doesn't turn on, that doesn't mean I'm just being lame and not participating. I'm not allowed to vote. So, cool little piece of info. All right, now, anyone in this room who is under the age of fifteen, come forward, please. Right up front. And if you're sixteen, you can come down, too. All right. See? The one scout in uniform. So come on down. The reason I have you all come down is because you guys are gonna lead us in the most important part of the entire evening, and that is honoring our nation with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay? Now, the way it's gonna work is this. Don't worry about the people behind you. You don't have to look at them. We're gonna turn around and face the flag, and when you see us turn around and it goes quiet, it's up to you to start the Pledge of Allegiance. You will be leading all of us in it, okay? Sound like a deal? So I give you all permission, use your outside voices. It's okay to do that, okay? We wanna hear you. You all ready? That was kind of an inside voice. Are you all ready?
Yeah.
That's better, all right. [Clerk] Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fantastic. Great job, guys. All right, next item up are special presentations. Michelle, do we have any special presentations tonight that I'm not aware of? All right. Next up, then, is our Parker Chamber of Commerce updates. Mr. Houston, would you come on down? And you would, I would like to point out that, um, that our, uh, the, in all of Colorado, Dennis Houston was, won an award, was it last month, correct? You were named, um, Chamber CEO of the Year for the entire state of Colorado, correct?
Something like that, yes.
And whereas Parker is a very informal place, Dennis normally does not come in shorts and a tee-shirt, but he's got just a little tiny event that's going on this week that I think he's gonna tell us about, so.
No more sleeps for Dennis.
Yeah.
I actually got up earlier today than Josh Martin did, I'm guessing.
Ah, that doesn't happen. So, all right, rock and roll.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I thought I'd give you guys kind of our, our last, uh, update before this little festival thing kicks off this weekend, Parker Days Festival, our fortieth year for Parker Days. Based on what we saw last year with the, the visitors that came into our community, it'll be somewhere in that two-hundred to two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-person range of people who will be here in our community during those three days. And when you think about that, on, uh, it's the equivalent of us hosting a Broncos home game each day in Parker, uh, in downtown Parker. So, there'll be some people. I'd encourage everyone, uh, everyone to help us be community ambassadors, help people that might look lost, uh, help people with directions downtown and just welcome them to, to our community. Many of them may, may be looking at relocating businesses or relocating their family as well. Uh, with Parker, if we can, okay, let me, I wanna shoot through a couple slides here and show you guys a few visual updates on some of the things you've been hearing about for, uh, for a while. Uh, our branding for Parker Days, as many of you have seen those posters around and social media, uh, that's been out there for a few months. Uh, Parker socks, I brought a sample pair of these, uh, as we did our inaugural socks last year. This is our second annual collector's series of socks, so those will be available at, Parker Days, available online right now, but it's a, it's a way to, uh, show your community pride. Uh, I know one, uh, one councilman that, uh, that likes coffee that was actually sworn in, uh, wearing his socks, so.
Can I get, can I get just the one?
Yeah, does he get a discount?
We'll, uh, wait for our half-price sale.
Half off.
For those of you who have no idea, that is, he only has one leg, so that's.
No, we'll work with you, Josh.
All right.
It's a, kinda like Tom Schuser. You could buy one and give one, you know, share a pair. So, uh, with, uh, with that, just a cool shot from the Ferris wheel from last year, early in the afternoon, so not big crowds, but you can kinda get a view of what Parker Days Festival looks like. That's up on top of Carnival Hill, up above O'Brien Park. Cool nighttime shot from, uh, the top of Vine's, uh, building, looking, uh, looking at, uh, the midway up on the hill and a lot of the exhibitor booths down below. Uh, our footprint, as, as many of you know, but to share with those in the audience as well, our footprint will be changing quite a bit this year. Parker Days will, uh, will run from Parker Road on Main Street all the way over to the library, over to the Ball and Jack's. And, uh, so you'll see a, a couple blocks of extended exhibitor booths and a lot of interactive things, street performers, uh, lots of cool things in that new area. Uh, some of those things will be our, uh, our food truck alley that'll be just on the side of, uh, Pace Center with several very cool, uh, food trucks throughout the weekend. Uh, this'll be fun. I can see elected officials taking advantage of this. This is our inflatable course that'll be on Main Street, roughly in front of the Pace Center on Main Street, and that's for kids of all ages, but our inflatable obstacle course, so, and that's just a, a free, uh, a free event for people to do when, uh, they're just looking to kill some time in downtown during the, during the festival. So, a fun, a fun event. So, looks like a great location for a Facebook Live activity, I think.
I think so.
Uh, some of the other additional things, you'll see, uh, some chalk artists, uh, the farmer's market on Sunday, the car show on Sunday. Both of those events will be on, down on this end, in the new, uh, new part of the venue. Uh, the, uh, car show on Sunday will be in, will be in the library parking lot, and the farmer's market will be on Main Street, right in front of Pace Center. So for those that are used to, uh, going to check out the great farmer's market, just come down a couple blocks and you'll find it. Number of street performers. Uh, one of the quirkiest, but I think, well, one of the coolest ones will be this guy in the upper left who is a, a typewriter poet. You stop there and you give him a topic and he'll write a poem for you on his typewriter and hand you the sheet of paper, so.
Wow.
So just some very weird stuff like that, besides the flamethrowers and all the regular guys you see at our, at our festival. Uh, our kickoff concert on Thursday night, Brett Michaels, looking for a great evening, great evening there. Uh, our Friday night will be our tribute night with, uh, our Styx Tribute Band, followed by Journey, uh, closing out with Van Halen.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, Saturday night, uh, our closing act on, on our country night will be Midland. Uh, their song Drinking Problem is this week, number fifteen on the Billboard Top One Hundred Chart, so it's gonna be a great, uh, free concert. And even though the Brett Michaels concert on Thursday night is a ticketed event and there is a fee, uh, the, the music on all three stages for the rest of the three and a half days is all free, as it always has been in the past, and this is one of those free, many free concerts. A lot of great partnerships in Parker, Denver, Colorado Springs, in both print, TV, and media, so we've really been help, out there trying to promote our community, uh, to get people to come, uh, check it out. As I've mentioned before, we're excited to have the Budweiser Clydesdales. Uh, they'll be downtown on, uh, Thursday. Uh, one of the Clydesdales will be, uh, down at the intersection where our big chair is that we made for Parker Days last year and donated to the, uh, to O'Brien Park. It'll be down in that area, and he'll be there to help greet, greet people as they come to check out the Brett Michaels concert on Thursday. And then, uh, there'll be our, uh, our closing act for the parade on Saturday morning, the entire team with the wagon and, and, uh, I believe even the Dalmatian will be with them as well. So, we're excited to have those guys with us. Uh, one of the new additions will be over near, uh, uh, Pike's Peak and Main Street will be, uh, a new addition to that beer garden area, uh, more of an interactive, uh, basically a semi-truck that turns into a transformer and, uh, turns into a bar. Uh, I've mentioned this before, I haven't shown the, uh, it's my kind of a transformer.
Is there an opportunity to purchase said truck?
We might be able to work out a deal if you buy a pair of socks for the right price.
It's an expensive pair of socks.
Yes, it is. It would be. Uh, I've mentioned this before, I hadn't, I didn't have visuals, but, uh, we've had, uh, in our partnership with Coca-Cola, over the last sixty days, we've had, uh, bottle hangers in retail stores in the South Metro, all the way down to Colorado Springs, and with particular retail partners on six-pack and eight-packs of Coca-Cola products promoting Parker and Parker Days. These are the two examples from last year, so don't panic by the date. That's last year's date. Uh, and then that, uh, picture on the left of the truck backs, uh, into the Coca-Cola trucks in our area, uh, been promoting Parker Days for the last month or so as well, as they've been making their deliveries in the, uh, South Metro. One of the things we're very excited about is our Share Coke Experience. It'll be across the street from the Chamber, and that will be, uh, a forty-by-forty-foot interactive display. You guys have some samples, uh, up there. I snuck up before the council meeting started. Those are examples of showing, uh, that, one says Parker, Colorado, and one says Parker Days. In this exhibit, you go up and, uh, you create your own cans of Coke with your name on it, a friend's name, or anything you want. You're limited by characters, but it's a very cool event. It's something I saw a couple years ago in, um, Winter Park, and we're excited to bring it, uh, to, uh, to Parker. It'll be one of two stops this entire year in Colorado. We're excited to have one of those two stops on their national tour, along with, uh, the Clydesdales. Believe it or not, it'll be the first stop in the metro in the last three years. So we're excited to have that. This is something, I don't know if I've shared lately, but when you look at the economic impact of, of Parker, that was all the fun stuff, but this is the bottom-line stuff. The economic impact on our community during those three and a half days, uh, and these are numbers that come from our economists that we worked with two years ago, and it's, it's extrapolated out for last year and this year, but a four-million-dollar impact on our community during those three and a half days. So, uh, for the numbers folks in the room, that's the bottom line of, of what that impact has, and, and tax dollars and, and impact on, uh, on convenience stores, restaurants, pubs, you name it. Uh, and with that, I'd like to, uh, close with, again, thanking you for the community partnership. Uh, we have over a thousand volunteers that help us with Parker Days, and we couldn't do it. We're a small team of five people at the Chamber, as, as you all know, and so we, we appreciate the partnership we have with all of our, uh, with all of our volunteers. And with that, I'd like to say thank you and be happy to answer any questions you may have. Other than that, please show up and, uh, check out Parker Days.
Council, any questions for Dennis?
No.
Oh, all right, well, get, please pass on a big thank you to your staff. They all, they worked, I know that I got an email from Sarah at like two thirty-eight in the morning the other day.
Yes.
Um, I know that they basically get no sleep for a week leading up to it, so.
I certainly will. I appreciate that. It's been kinda crazy, so, Josh, it's likely we'll be at the office when you wake up tomorrow. So, uh, good deal. Thank you, and, uh, I apologize, but after your nice comments at the beginning, I have to skip out early to go help get ready for Parker.
Oh, absolutely, I'm sure. Yeah, all right, buddy.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Next item up is our Downtown Business Alliance update. Lovely Mrs. Mango, would you like to come forward?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Thank you for having me again. Um, all right. We have officially completed two First Friday Art Walks since the last Town Council meeting. It seems odd, I come here once a month and we've already had two, but it's how the calendar fell. May 5th, the weather was gorgeous, and we had approximately seventy-five people that visited our thirteen artists. This past Friday, Mother Nature wasn't quite cooperative with us, and we only had forty or so people visit our artists. However, that being said, I think we did so much marketing and advertising for it that really downtown Parker, all the restaurants were buzzing. I think everyone was staying in because the wind and the rain and lightning, it was a little, uh, scary. So, uh, we are committed to keep going, to keep this going every Friday, every First Friday, and we are confident that we will see momentum build. We are really excited about watching that. Our plan is to provide the other buildings in downtown Parker, um, in the DTP area, that's my little new lingo, DTP, C in DTP, um, a template to follow, to, to follow and add their buildings, um, into the art walk and activate the whole downtown, um, area. It does take a group of people, um, each Friday, at least four or five of us, to, um, get this event set up and, and going, so we're gonna, we're creating a template that other buildings in downtown Parker, if they find a group, uh, of, of volunteers in their own building, that can take this and, and run with it, and we'll supply them the artists, but they can, you know, activate their own building into, into this art walk. So we're super excited about continuing and watching the First Friday Art Walk grow. So please come down, First Friday, every month. Um, the Downtown Business Alliance is also moving forward and applying for our 501(c)(6) status. We currently have our EIN, our Articles of Incorporation, our bylaws, and we, um, our goal in the next month is filling out a complete board, uh, a board member group, um, and then sending in our application. So we need all those pieces to send in the application, and then we wait, so we're really excited as a DBA to become a, an official 501(c)(6). Um, concern, I just wanted to bring up something, has come up in the new wayfinding sign. I felt it was my obligation to speak on the behalf of, uh, businesses that have brought it to my attention, that wayfinding sign that's right at the pedestrian wayfinding sign in the corner of Pike's Peak and Main Street. Restaurants and shops have had customers that have come in and said, "Why aren't you identified on the sign as a restaurant or as a shop?" Um, can that change? And have shopping and dining identified in all the right places throughout, you know, throughout downtown? So it's a question thrown out there. I will follow up with a couple of you to see who I should, you know, how we can get the shopping and dining stickers, because the buildings all feel that they should represent who they are. When a pedestrian is standing there trying to figure out where to dine and shop, and, you know, and you may wanna stop by that, that kiosk and see, 'cause you'll, you'll probably be able to tell what I'm talking about pretty, pretty immediately. Um, lastly, the lights have been a great addition, uh, to the area, and other buildings are wondering if they could have lights as well in the, in the DTP area. Uh, my thought was this, I'm just gonna throw it out there, just food for thought right now, was, once the Christmas lights are placed up this year, could we identify trees that surround prominent buildings and keep some of them up all year long? I'm simply planting the seed tonight, and would appreciate feedback, um, on the, on who I should seek approval on this as well, because it would be really cool, now that we're drawing people into downtown, to have them identify where the shopping and dining buildings are as well, and they can move around freely and feel like they're all, everything's lit up around those areas. So, any questions?
Council, any questions for Shelley?
My only, my only comment would be in the wintertime, outside of the evergreen trees, they would be covered up by leaves typically, but some of the evergreens, I think, might.
Yeah, and I know David has asked several times, made the comment about the, lighting up the ones in front of his building. I think, yeah, the concern is the leaves on, the leaves are on the trees than the median during the summertime where they're not in the wintertime, but it's definitely something. Michelle, if you could get with, I don't even, are you act, acting as Parks and Rec or acting, who knows what you're acting as tonight?
Get with Jim.
Get with Jim to look at what those options are in terms of where we can have lighting and where we can't during the summertime? That'd be fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Appreciate the time. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Great. All right, next item on our agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for you to come and, uh, give comment to council. These are for, this section right here is for items that are not currently on our agenda. So if you're here for an agenda item, one of the public hearings, there will be public comment on that item at that time. So this is for things that are not on our agenda, just general public comment. There's a three-minute time limit. You'll see there's a clock above me, and there's a clock on the back of the wall, too, that I get to see as well, and, uh, no action will be taken on them, so it's, it's just an opportunity for you to come up if you have, um, an item to give for public comment. So we'll open up public comment at 7:29 PM. Nope, I was gonna say, he's standing up. Is he coming down for public comment?
[inaudible]
All right. Sounds good. All right. Well, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:30 PM and move to, uh, reports, items, and comments from Mayor and Council. How about we start with John?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, let's see here, we haven't been here for a few weeks. Uh, Councilmember Martin, myself, we're representing the town of Parker at the ICSC Economic Development Conference in Las Vegas with a few other staff. It's, it was a time for us to, um, talk to developers and other, um, people who wanna come into Parker that, to just tell them who we're all about, and I think it was a pretty successful meeting, uh, a group of meetings at least. We had a police awards ceremony, which I think all of us attended, fantastic event. Um, you know, it was just a tremendous event. Every year, I, I just get more and more respect if you can do that with our, with our, uh, police departments, as well as everyone else in the surrounding area that, that comes and assists us to honor these, these great people within our organization. So I think, uh, that's about it for now. Uh, I'll pass it to Renee.
Renee. So I attended the employee, the Parker, um, Town Employee Luncheon at the Police Department, which was very nice. The Police Department Awards, which John already mentioned. I did a business retention visit with Threaded Inc. Um, for the business retention visits, Town Council and staff team up together, and we go visit, um, businesses in town, and we get their feedback on what's working well and what might not be working well, and on some things that we could perhaps assist them with. And I'm happy to report that Threaded Inc. is thrilled with everything, so that was good to hear. We now have free concerts in the park at Discovery Park. They're on Thursday nights through the month of June and July, except next week, which is Parker Days, and Tunisia was the concert that was last Thursday. And if you didn't get to attend, please do so, they're fabulous events. I had a par branding meeting, and then today, um, a number of us went on a development, design, standards tour to look at different architectural designs in some other areas to help us determine, um, standards for Parker.
All right. Josh?
Um, yeah, it's been, uh, I guess it's been a busy, uh, few weeks. I won't rehash what everybody else, we went to together. I did do a business retention for Stone Gate Cafe, um, over at Lincoln and Jordan, uh, new ownership as of eight months or so ago. Um, they're doing well, but it was, uh, it was great to inform them what the town can do for them as, as, as far as, uh, capital improvements and how we can assist them, uh, get off the ground, I guess is the best thing, 'cause when you take over a new business, there's always hidden, um, surprises, and, uh, it's nice if, uh, the town can help invest in that, in that situation. Now, the second thing, the chief stepped out, but, uh, I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm really happy that we have, uh, two officers, Jonathan Nelson and Officer Ryan Yow, completed the, uh, Police Motorcycle Operations School last week, so you're gonna see, uh, a couple of chips running around Parker. Hopefully they'll ride in tandem, 'cause I know this is awesome.
With some happy music playing.
Half the audience got the reference?
Yeah. Who's gonna be Pontch?
Yeah, I think it's Phipps, though.
Yeah. So, yeah, we do, we do, uh, the town, you citizens own a couple Harleys, so it's gonna be nice to see them, uh, out in patrol.
Okay. Amy?
Uh, Councilman Dyak and I also attended the Parker Cultural and Scientific Commission meeting a few weeks ago. During that time, we interviewed several applicants for the commission, and what's really nice, I'm, in my six-and-a-half-year on council, and during that time, we've just seen a real increase in applicants for all of our commissions, and so it's just great to see members of the community who are actively, um, showing an interest in becoming involved in all of the different opportunities, whether it's Special Licensing, Planning Commission, Cultural Commission, there's just a lot to do out there, and we have a great group, and that, uh, committee is definitely increasing in, um, membership. Also, we had a Creative District meeting as well. That's another organization that's really, pretty much led by the community at this point, by either artists, business, and Shelley's always touching base on it when she does her update, um, but again, artists, business members, and citizens who just enjoy all of the different events that are being held here in Parker. That's another great committee that you are welcome to come, check it out, see what's going on. If you want information just for, you know, what's going on this weekend, the week, you have family in town, you just wanna go out and spend time with, um, your friends, ParkerCreativeDistrict.org, it's one of the best places to go to, to see what's going on in this creative entertainment district. Anyone, whether, you know, if you have a church activity that's being held down here that's open to the community, um, any of our organizations like Rotary, things like that, they can just go on there, submit their information, and this is kinda like a one-stop-shop place to find out what is going on. And so just even for Parker Days, they have information on all the concerts, free concerts that the Pace Center is holding. Um, you can find out about just anything that's going on in town, so that's just another great link. And then we do invite the community to attend, um, a very special, uh, groundbreaking, about groundbreaking, I keep saying groundbreaking, it's been so long we've been working on this. It's a celebration for our dog park and our disc golf park, and that's this Wednesday, June 14th on Flag Day. It'll be held, um, at 4:30 PM, and the address is 178-55 Pine Lane, and it's just kinda right there, around that E470 kinda surrounds it, and Pine Lane over there, just, uh, I guess a little bit east of Southeast Christian would be a good, uh...
East of Challenge Excellence.
Yeah, oh, east of Challenge Excellence, things like that. So, um, what we really do wanna, um, make sure, though, that you share that with your friends, family. We will be dedicating the park to, uh, a former citizen who graduated from Chaparral High School, and that's U, uh, United States Marine Corps Corporal, uh, David Sanka, who, um, passed away protecting our country, and we just wanna make sure that we totally show as much appreciation and support to him and his family as we name this dog park in his honor, and also his dog, who was, uh, life was taken as well. And then the, um, of course, the West Creek Disc Golf Park, I'm surprised you didn't bring that one up.
Josh Rivera Memorial Disc Golf.
These are, and these are things truly, I mean, when we go back, uh, you know, Corporal Sanka, I attended his funeral back in, uh, 2013, and had made this, uh, proposal to council, that it would really be nice, uh, to honor him by moving forward and getting a dog park and hopefully dedicating it to him. So, sometimes it takes a little bit longer than we like to get some of these projects done. We've had a couple challenges along the way, but we're finally there, and again, thanks to staff who have worked tirelessly to get this done, and we really appreciate that. That's it.
Josh?
Um, I think the only thing I have to add, we had, uh, in the middle of the month, our, our board meeting for E470, I'm the member from the town of Parker who, uh, who is appointed to that board. The only, the only update is we, the, the widening is going on, um, it's scheduled to be done actually ahead of time and under budget. The only other thing we had was, when they had that large fire, that fuel truck fire on, um, I-25, we worked in cooperation with CDOT so that they'll, CDOT's actually going to reimburse us for the tolls, but it was a way to get everybody, trying to get, help get folks get around that, so, um, it's always good when, when entities can kind of work together. It tends to sort of help out everybody as a whole. So that was a plus, and that's the only thing I have in addition to everything else.
So a couple things for me, since in the last two weeks, we had the Officer of the Year Award from the, uh, Noon Rotary Club. I got to speak at that, so it's always a great event. We had the police awards for our police department. I'm really hoping, um, uh, Chief, that next year we can, uh, actually promote that event a little more to the general public, 'cause I think a lot of people would be, they'd be kinda cool to come see our office, our officers, the awards they win. Um, Officer Joe Cummings received his, what was it, his sixth lifesaving award? Fifth or sixth lifesaving award? So this is an officer, like, if you ever are not sure about your health, just have Joe hang around with you, because he'll bring you back. But not only that, he was also received a lifesaving award for like six ducks that he helped get across the road, so we actually got a little duck pin that he can wear on his uniform, kinda cool. Um, had the Memorial Day Service at, uh, the Ponderosa Valley Funeral Home puts on at the Parker Cemetery. It's a really, really great event. It was, uh, I got, I had the honor of getting to speak there again this year. We had a flyover this year, we actually had a double flyover, I guess the one that was scheduled, that went over, and then about a few minutes later when they turned around and came back, so we got to have two flyovers, it was pretty cool. Um, last Saturday, this last weekend, I was at the Heart of the Horse fundraiser at Color, at the, um, Colorado Horse Park. A lot of people don't realize, as an asset and an amenity, even though the Colorado Horse Park isn't in the town limits, um, it's a, it's a facility in Parker that has, there is only one other horse facility in the nation that has higher yearly attendance, and that's Churchill Downs, where the Kentucky Derby is held. So they have events out there all year long, it's an incredible facility to be at. I spoke at Legend High School's election, High School Election Ceremony, which was pretty cool. Got to judge at Pine Grove Elementary School. Got to speak at the CVS Pharmacy Grand Opening on Lincoln and, and Jordan. That is the first standalone CVS Pharmacy in Colorado. All the rest of them are in like Targets or other locations. And so this is the first standalone unit that they're investing in. Got, had a coffee with Commissioner Weaver to discuss partnerships and things going on there. We had our Development Design Standard Tour today, which was really, really great. Thank you, staff and everybody, for setting that up and doing it. Got to have dinner with Sophie, a little third, or fourth grade girl who won dinner with the mayor at a silent auction. So that was kind of cool. Got to be the keynote speaker at the Parker Toastmasters 30th Anniversary, which happened to be the same night of the free concerts in the park, which I got to go down and open that up. And Tunisia was great. And then last but not least, I got, and none of this is in order, it's kind of all over the place. I got to do something in the last two weeks I've never been invited to do in my life, and it was a really cool experience. I got to be the keynote speaker at the commencement ceremony at, for Colorado early, Colorado Early Colleges. It was, the funny part about it though was when they invited me and I said, yes, I could do it. They said, okay, make sure and wear your college regalia to it. And I said, I have, it's in a dumpster somewhere, because they, you know, they didn't give me really anything. So I showed up and here's all these people putting on all these different gowns and loops around their necks. And I'm like, this is what you get. So someone let me borrow a gown, so I don't know whose gown I got to wear there. But it was, it was really cool to get to see and be part of. So that was my last two weeks as well. All right, next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. If you have a copy of our agenda in front of you, you'll see a lot of the items on our consent agenda say first reading on them. And the reason they're there on the consent agenda is because this council, and any council legally should not be discussing any item unless it's been brought into the public domain. They should not be discussing things and have access to information that you don't have as citizens. So since they can't discuss something until it's brought into public domain, the first reading is what brings it into public domain and allows them to discuss it and allows that information to be brought into the public. So that's why when you look on the consent agenda, there's so many items that say first reading. So with that, council, I'll entertain further discussion or a motion on consent agenda items 7A through 7D.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Josh Rivero and a second by Amy. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is our Town Administrator's Report. Acting TA, Michelle, would you have anything you'd like to add tonight?
No, I do not.
All right, thank you very much. Then we're gonna move on to our next item, item number nine, is a public hearings. 9A is a public hearing for Resolution Number 17-027. This is a resolution to adopt the 2017 Downtown Parking Plan and Study as an addendum to the Main Street Master Plan, which was adopted as part of the Parker 23, 2035 Master Plan. And Carolyn, you're gonna be our, our ringleader tonight, right? All right, rock and roll.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council.
Yeah, you gotta pull that up closer too. There you go.
Okay. Good evening. Tonight I'll be presenting the recommendation to adopt the 2017 Downtown Plan and Study as a, as an addendum to the Main Street Master Plan. Our consultant Vanessa Soulsby from Kimberly Horn is here. And she'll be helping, she'll be assisting answering questions about the project. To give you a little bit of background, the town hired Kimberly Horn to prepare the study and examine current parking conditions and develop recommendations to address future parking needs. Some of the components of the study were extensive public outreach, implementation strategies, and the plan was finalized in May. Data collection and analysis determined that there were a total of 2,496 parking spaces in downtown with 32 parking lots. Kimberly Horn observed how these parking spaces were used and how long cars were parked in downtown. There were a number of community outreach venues such as community surveys, open houses and presentations. Stakeholder feedback from these venues resulted in statements such as parking can be found within two minutes of downtown, in downtown, and drivers want a park once experience. Analysis of public outreach and data collection concluded that the demand for parking is greatest in the heart of downtown and the pressure points for parking are a lack of turnover in parking spaces and also the impacts of new development. There were a number of near and long-term implementation strategies in the study. One was mastering the basics, which is to help ensure that parking, our current parking assets are well utilized. And another was pursuing shared parking opportunities. The study also had recommendations on implementing special event parking. We received a number of positive public comments on the study, specifically on the implementation of two-hour parking in downtown. We had business owners and residents comment that the two-hour parking limitation was, actually had a positive impact on downtown and that they felt that streets felt a little less congested and that the turnover, that there was more of a steady turnover in parking spaces. The Downtown Parking Plan and Study is a policy document, and it'll be an addendum to the Main Street Master Plan. Both of these plans are major components of the Parker 35, 2035 Master Plan. Town Council received a full copy of the study in the staff, Town Staff Reports. And we also conducted study overview presentations at Town Council, to Town Council on two different sessions. One was on March 27th, and the second one was on May 8th. Staff recommends that Town Council adopt the 2017 Downtown Parking Plan and Study as an addendum to the Main Street Master Plan, which was adopted as part of the Parker 2035 Master Plan. Are there any questions?
Council, any questions?
Not yet.
Carolyn?
Hear from Kimberly Horn.
Okay. No, do we wanna have Kimberly come up?
Not Kimberly.
I'm not, but, sorry, Kimberly Horn. You could just be called Kimberly, right? Vanessa, come on down. Yeah, just call you. Blonde lady in the red, right? Do you get name and address for the record, please?
Sure, 5498 Valentina Street, Denver, Colorado, 8038. And I'm here and happy to answer any questions.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to the presentation or?
No, no, I think, I think we're good. Hopefully you guys have had enough FaceTime with me thus far. But I think the only thing I will add is it's been our pleasure to serve the town on this really important project. And we look forward to continuing our, our service through implementation.
Council, questions? No, all right, thank you very much. Since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 7:48 PM if there's anyone wishing to address council on this item. This is the time. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:48 PM. And council, I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
Move to approve Resolution Number 17-027.
Second?
We have a motion by Josh and a second by John. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda, item 9B. This is Site Plan Amendment for Lot 2, Parker Town Hall, Third Amendment, Subexemption Platt. And Carolyn, you're gonna be our ringleader for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
I'm not sure if you're on.
Microphone's not happening. Brian's a veteran, he can.
Oh, yeah.
So we are here to review a proposal for parking lot reconfiguration over at the old Town Hall. This proposal is located at the southwest corner of Main Street and Pace Center Drive, also known as 20118 East Main Street. Also, it is in the Greater Downtown Historic District. The proposed reconfiguration will be more efficient and will increase the available parking stalls from the current 24 stalls and one accessible stall to 31 regular stalls and two accessible stalls. Engineering has determined that replacement of the 30-plus-year-old concrete parking lot on the west side of Old Town Hall is needed. A similar repair and replacement project for the lower parking lot was completed in 2015. This project will partially reconfigure the existing pavement to provide additional parking and improve both vehicular and pedestrian access and circulation. The proposal includes two new concrete sidewalk connections to the Xeric Gardens to the west. There we go, sorry. The first one will pass through the midpoint of the parking lot and connect to the main entrance of Old Town Hall. The second will be built on the northwest corner of the parking lot. The proposal also includes two new parking light poles to match the existing pole light. And also, Parker Parks and Recs has developed a landscape plan for the site that will blend and complement existing onsite and adjacent landscaping. Recent development in this area includes the new Douglas County Library and the new Discovery Park. Additionally, community-oriented temporary uses are contemplated for the East Main site west of Discovery Park. Future growth on the other vacant parcels in the area is also anticipated. The additional parking and improved vehicular and pedestrian circulation that will result from this proposal will benefit both current residents and anticipated future growth. The Planning Commission and staff recommend that the council approve the Site Plan Amendment request to Parker Town Hall, Third Amendment, Subdivision, Exemption Platt. And staff is happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council, any questions for Carolyn? No, all right. Since this is a public hearing, we'll open up public comment at 7:52 PM. If there's anyone here wishing to.
What is the cost?
You can come on, come on down and you can ask it. Yeah, we can't get you on the record unless we have you at the microphone. No, just come on down.
Do you open a public meeting?
Yeah, come on down. All right, so the only requirements with public comment is you have to give your name and address for the record. When you say it into the microphone, we'll be able to hear the question. We'll go through all of public comment, and then after all the questions that are asked, the answers will be given.
Okay, my name is Leanna Gieling, and do you need a dress?
Please.
18756 Horse Creek Street, Parker.
Wonderful, and then go ahead and ask your question.
I'm just curious at the cost because it's sounding like, from what I gather, from what I was just hearing, it was like five extra spots? A handful of extra spots for that project, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:53 PM. Carolyn, would you go ahead and address that issue? And then also go over the reasonings of, of the, of why there's a redevelopment going on this again?
Sure, Mr. Hudson may be able to give a little bit better explanation. This is part of our annual repair and maintenance budget that we do. And in terms of the extra parking spaces, the other thing it's gonna do is improve the access and circulation. When that parking lot was originally designed, it was accessed straight off of Main Street. So the access is a little funky now.
Okay. Chris, do you wanna go into that? If you could explain a little bit what the maintenance on it would be in the current form and then the costs that are involved above that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The, the existing parking lot, 30-year-old pavement, I've gotten complaints, especially when the task force was there, people tripping over the potholes that are in the parking lot. The cost total right now is about $200,000 when you count all the landscaping, the lighting that we're gonna be adding to it. To rebuild the existing parking lot would be about $150,000 to $160,000 to rebuild it. And again, just replace this asphalt, excuse me, the concrete pavement that's failing out there. Is there additional cost with it? Yes, but it's a lot more efficient space than it is today. And the best part is it looks like a giant A from the air, so it's, the Avengers know that we're, no.
The Avengers know.
But it's, it's, it's an important addition. We, we have to replace that, the old pavement anyway. And we just said we need to make it more efficient and more usable than it is today. We are reducing the amount of bluegrass turf out there and putting in a significant reduction in the zero-scape area out there to match the plaza area work that we did two years ago, so.
Can you, can you speak to the footprint? It just looks like a reconfiguration, but the actual hard surface is, looks to be about the same?
The hard surface increases a little bit to the north, but we're also removing the, the bluegrass turf median and downsizing that on the, be on the east side of, excuse me, the west side of the parking lot. Right now it's just an access road. Back in 2000, we, this was a completely different access parking lot. The road went directly north from the parking lot up to Main Street. And when we built the Main Street improvements in 2000 and 2001, everything got reconfigured and got redone. So the, the drop-off circle that's in front of it, it used to be a drop-off triangle. You could say it was in front of it. It's no longer, it doesn't make much sense anymore, so we're reconfiguring that to work better for, better parking. Since we're gonna be tearing it out anyway, let's replace it and make it better.
Okay. All right, thank you very much, Chris. So with that, at 7:56, I'll entertain further discussion, council, or a motion, please.
I move to approve the site amendment plan for Lot 2, Parker Town Hall, Third Amendment, Subexemption Platt, as recommended by staff.
Second?
We have a motion by Josh Rivero, and we have a second by Renee. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda is item number 9C. This is Lot 3, Cherrywood Commercial Subdivision, filing number one, amendment number three, use by special review. Ryan, the show is yours.
Okay, Mayor, thank you very much, and good evening, council members. This is the Cherrywood Commercial Subdivision, filing number one, amendment number three, Lot 3, use by special review request. The applicant is M.J. Cassett Architects, and Michael Cassett is present this evening and has a presentation to follow mine. The subject parcel is Lot 3 of Cherrywood Commercial Subdivision and is shown in red on this map. The parcel is generally located on the southeast quarter of Jordan Road in E470, the eastbound on-ramp of E470, to be specific. I put a blue box shown within the red. It's a not-to-scale representation of the hotel that is the subject of this public hearing this evening. Surrounding uses are E470 to the north. To the east is a drainage detention pond and ranch stone apartments. To the south is Challenge the Excellence Charter School, Kitty Academy, as well as the Loaf and Jug. And to the west is undeveloped commercially zoned parcels. So what brought us here this evening is that a site plan was submitted for a four-story hotel, four-story, to be specific, a La Quinta Hotel on Lot 3. This would be the third four-story hotel along the E470 corridor in Parker, the others being the Holiday Inn and Hampton Inn and Crown Point. Hotels are a use-by-right in this zone district. However, the zone district requires use-by-special-review approval if the hotel exceeds 50 feet in height. This hotel, at its highest architectural element, is 64 feet 2 inches in height, and the zoning allows hotels up to 75 feet in height with use-by-special-review approval. The increase in height beyond 50 feet is what, is what is within our purview this evening, not the use. This use was zoning, excuse me, it was annexed and zoned in 1999 and has been allowed use since then. For reference, I included the two hotels along the E470 corridor for council's reference. The Hampton Inn, at Cottonwood Drive in E470, is 67 feet in height. The Holiday Inn, just up the road from that, is 57 feet in height. And this, this structure will be 64 feet in height 2 inches, just to reiterate. Okay, the next few slides will focus on the proposed building's architecture elements that go above the 50 feet. The next few slides will also have a red line depicting the 50-feet height limit where this is. Everything that is above the 50-feet height limit is unoccupied structure. It is parapets, the front tower of the building, the rear tower of the building, so on and so forth. This is the, I believe that this slide, when you're standing on Jordan Road facing it direct on, this is what you'll see. The entry tower is the most prominent feature here at 64 feet 2 inches in height. This is what you would see if you were standing on E470, looking at the building straight on again. As you see, the red line here is the permitted height allowed, 50 feet. And you can see the front tower is here now, it's 64 feet 2 inches. The rear tower is 56 feet. The bulk of the building is 50 feet 8 inches. That is the main parapet. If you flip it around, this is what you would see from the south. Again, the front tower is 64 feet 2 inches. Rear tower is 56 feet 3 inches. The main parapet being 50 feet 8 inches. The parapet's very in height to add architectural interest. And this is from the rear of the building. The rear tower you see is 56 feet 3 inches, and the entry tower up front is 64 feet 2 inches. So again, this use by special review is for the increase in height beyond 50 feet. And the scope of staff's analysis is limited to that, as you saw in the staff report. The applicant does have a site plan currently in review right now that is being reviewed for compliance with the Land Development Ordinance. Detailed analysis of the nine use-by-special-review criteria is included in the staff report that is given to council. Staff has found that all nine use-by-special-review criteria has been met with this, for the hotel to go above 50 feet in height. On May 25th, Planning Commission has unanimously recommended that the council approve this use-by-special-review request. And staff and Planning Commission recommends that the Town Council approve the Cherrywood Commercial Subdivision, filing number one, amendment number three, Lot 3, use-by-special-review request, with the conditions as outlined in staff's report. And again, the applicant, Michael Cassett, does have a presentation, but I'll be happy to take any questions. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Council, do you have any questions for Ryan before we have the applicant come up?
I'm gonna, I have a question, but I think it's probably better to ask Ryan after the presentation.
Your call.
Yeah.
All right, anyone on the? All right, anyone on this side? No? All right, then if, Michael, if you're available, to come on down? If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Michael Cassett with M.J. Cassett Architects, 7563 South Salida Court, Centennial, Colorado. Brian, Ryan has done a great job focusing on the specific item that we're here tonight before you, on, on the building. The architectural elements that extend beyond the fifty-foot limit are to create an interesting building for La Quinta. La Quinta is a business class hotel that we think is gonna be very successful at this location and, and bring, and as an anchor to this development that the developers here. We do have the developer, Rich Gabley, with United Parker Properties available for any questions you might have about the hotel itself, its operations, and, and the development. But if you have any questions regarding the height or the architectural elements, we're available to answer your questions.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Cassett?
No.
All right. Did Mr. Gabley have any, anything he wanted to add to it, or? Okay.
Not at this time.
Thank you very much. All right, at this point, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:03 PM. Again, just to kind of reiterate, the way public comment works, there's a three-minute time limit. You can see the clock above me, and there's one in the back as well. You'll come on up, do your name and address for the record, and then after that, I'll start the clock. One of the things that I always like to remind everyone during public comment of any hearing that we have, which we have twice a month, and that is this. Except for the little kids sitting in the back of the room, we are all here, are adults. You will hear people who will give opinions that you agree with, and you will hear people give opinions that you don't agree with. The one consistent through, through all of them is that we all have the God-given right to our own opinions, and this is the opportunity for you to share those opinions. So what you, there will be is the sharing of opinions. What there won't be is booing, and hissing, and yelling, and screaming, and banging on stuff, and so on and so forth. So with that, we'll start at this side of the room. If there's anyone here for public comment on this item, this is the time to come down. We'll start from the back forward. Seeing no movement, we'll go to the center-left. Let's start in the back row and see if there's anyone in the back row. No, 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 no. Young man, that's you. And I will give, right next to you, I have no idea if there's anyone sitting next to you or not because of the podium, so. If so, I was gonna say, if someone's sitting next to you, they need to raise their hand, too. But come on up, and if you'll leave your piece of paper right there, state your name and address. Yep, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lance Losi. My address is 11568 Terrawood Court. I am a recent transplant to Parker, Colorado. My wife and I moved here from Tucson in August of last year. My two sons, ages ten and eight, attend Challenge to Excellence school, and I think the, the La Quinta Hotel is a beautiful addition to our town. However, I believe, it is my opinion that having a beautiful hotel where you cannot control the occupants of said hotel, looking right onto the school grounds, is a poor decision on the part of the city council. About sixty years ago, when my mom was a six-year-old girl, she was raped by the milkman's assistant, who was fifteen years old. No person should ever have to deal with something like that. And I think it would be very irresponsible, as a town council, to allow a, a hotel establishment where there's no control on the occupants of said hotel to exist in such close proximity to a school where there are so many children. As a concerned father, it is my opinion that the location is very poorly chosen. The building itself is beautiful, and I am sure there are other places in the city of Parker where such a building could be placed, but that location, you know, the, the site plan and the pictures did not show the school field right behind the, excuse me, right behind the hotel. My opinion is that it is not a good choice to have any such hotel in such close proximity to a school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up in that, is there any, you said there was someone next to you, or there's no one next to you there?
No one here.
Okay, then we'll move to this section, back row. Coming forward, coming forward, coming forward. Name and address for the record, please.
Sam Salas, 7568 South Shawnee Street.
And that was Salas?
Salas, S-A-L-A.
Okay.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been a law enforcement officer in Colorado for approximately ten years. Many of those years and presently, I've been assigned to the school district within my jurisdiction as a school resource officer, meaning that the safety and well-being of students, children in the community are my top priority. With this experience, I know how deliberate you have to be in order to ensure the safety of a school and the children in attendance, especially in current social environments with schools being targeted for extreme violence. This school thrives in the area that it is in. It is able to maintain the safety and security of the children and entrusted to them, including my own, because of the actions and precautions taken by conscientious, informed leaders and community members like yourselves. Changing the space around the school to be transient, which inherently happens with any hotel, will dramatically decrease the safety and security of our children sharing that space. By allowing this business to be built on the doorstep of our children's school, you're not only inviting, but creating a whole new element of danger for the students and families that you're supposed to be protecting. I can draw many parallels between this proposed La Quinta and the hotels that are within my jurisdiction, and from my professional experience, these kinds of businesses would invite increased criminal activity. And in addition to the added risk of creating in general a low accountability, high-risk, transient space, these kinds of hotels do not have restrictions, such as the other gentleman said, who can rent a room. This means that convicted offenders, normally restricted from residing within the school zone, like registered sex offenders, are welcome to enter our children's space. We are their line of defense, that our children are counting on. We should not be allowing for or inviting these threats anywhere near them. Allowing this building development would cripple the Challenge to Excellence School, its performance, enrollment, and the safe-carrying environment is worked so hard to foster. Challenge to Excellence is a high-performing school within Douglas County School District. The school has earned the John Irwin Award multiple years in a row. The John Irwin Award are given to schools that demonstrate exceptional academic achievement over time, reflecting exceptional performance in math, English language arts, and science. After speaking with many parents who currently trust the well-being and safety of their children to the Challenge to Excellence School and the surrounding community, it's clear that many, including myself, would feel concerned enough to probably withdraw their students from the school. A top-performing school in the Douglas County School District would be ruined because the community failed to take necessary precautions to protect their children. Parker was voted as one of the best places in the country to raise a family, and it's because of the decisions of leaders and others that convey a commitment to our families, children, schools, and our community as a whole. Let this decision convey that same commitment to keeping our children safe, and do not allow this building development to continue. A few tax dollars is not worth putting our children at risk and destroying a thriving school, especially when one exit down the highway, there are numerous hotel options already in existence. Thank you for your dedication and support for our children and the community. I hope that decision's support and support shines through in this circumstance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sam. Okay, same section, next row up? No? No? All right, then we'll move to this section here, back against the wall, and then we'll move up. Young man? Yep, you're the young man. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Fred Kirchner, 21284 Woodside Lane. So I have, I'm a young man with an eight-, nine-year-old, and, and we've attended that school since they were in kindergarten. And I can tell you this, had I pulled up to that school to look at it for enrollment, and I looked at a four-story hotel, I would not have enrolled my children in that school. I would have missed a great opportunity, because it's a great school. But I guarantee you, I'm not the only one who would feel that way. Now, I don't understand this right to use, all right? I don't understand how it trumps, trumps your responsibility to protect my kids. I keep hearing about the sex offenders that are registered, that will be in that hotel potentially, but what about the ones who aren't registered, the ones who haven't been caught yet? That, that is like the opportune place for them to go, especially if it's a failed hotel. If that hotel fails, it won't be a nice La Quinta, it will be a Motel Six. So I understand there's this thing about prior use or, or right to use, so he can build anything he wants there. He could put anything in that place he wants. But you, and I guess you can't say anything about it. You have no power in that area. But we do have power, and it's that is currently slated to be fifty feet, and they want it to be sixty feet. You could say no to that. You could say no to that sixty feet. You have every right to do that, and it may, it may change their mind on that development. But it definitely will keep it me from having to go, from being out on that soccer field with my sons, looking up here at the hotel, to looking up there at the hotel. Okay, and that's what, that's the change you could make and possibly change that development. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next up in that same row? No? Next row up? We need like lights on the floor or something to light up each of each row. You'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Jennifer Schaefer, 17054 Wellington Drive, it's in Parker. I want to say, first of all, thank you for hearing our comments here today. I am the mother of an upcoming kindergartner, as well as a teacher at Challenge to Excellence. My son has had the honor of meeting you, Mayor Wade. I believe he was under the impression that you knew Batman, so he was somewhat disappointed.
No, that I am Batman. No, just kidding.
I'll tell him. I'll tell him. So as a middle school teacher, we very often talk to children about current events. I wanted to bring to you today an idea that came from my children in a current event selectives class. When they saw the sign go up, their first question was, "What happens to the prairie dogs?", which I reminded them that they carry the plague. They cared about that slightly less. An eighth-grade girl described this, which was affirmed by all of her classmates as creepy. The fact that she plays soccer on that field, the fact that she practices out there, the fact that my five-year-old son will be out there playing on that playground, they described that as creepy. If nothing else, the feelings of the children, I don't feel like they're necessarily represented here in this meeting, so I wanted to bring that to you. As the gentleman before me spoke, we have very little control over what that is zoned for, and I understand that that is not something that you can necessarily control at this point. Other hotels in the area are over fifty feet. They are not surrounded by children. We have the Kitty Academy, as well as the Challenge to Excellence Field and Playground. My own classroom sits directly across that field. It's creepy. If we can prevent it from being over fifty feet, perhaps they will change their mind. If not, perhaps that gives us the protections that we need to be able to keep the children from potentially being leered at by registered sex offenders that we have no control over, who occupies those hotel rooms. My concern here is not with building. We are very excited. We've heard that perhaps there could be a Starbucks. The teachers are 1,000% on board with this plan. We're not reticent to change. Our concern really here is for the safety of our children and trying to control who is around them. We also have the added concern of our carpool problem. I'm hoping that La Quinta is understanding of exactly what happens in terms of carpool around our school. I'm also concerned about the transient population. I'm also concerned about the fact that we are directly across from a freeway. This kind of location with a transient population could invite more crime. It being directly across from our field, I'm concerned about ending up with drug paraphernalia or alcohol bottles in our field, on our playgrounds, with access to our children. So this is about their safety, and this is about trying to protect what we can protect. So I ask that you please deny the fifty, the above-the-fifty-foot provision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same row? Name and address for the record, please.
Paula Roget, 17054 Wellington Drive, Parker. I'm here also to oppose the building of the La Quinta. Again, not that I'm afraid of the change of the building. We've had lots of things brought up in Parker that are great. It's simply the location close to the school. The school already has been on lockdown several times from the apartments that are around the school, from police activity where they're having to take care of something at the apartment already. And now you're gonna put a hotel on the lot in front, adding to the congestion there and the chance of another lockdown for the school and the kids. Also, the carpool already backs out onto the street, and that's gonna add further congestion in the area, which also is a safety concern for the kids. I also think, as stated before, this will increase the chances of having, of being a pedophile in the area that can be watching and, you know, going after their prey. I also find it kind of crazy that recently there was a bid for a hotel downtown that got nixed because of the parking situation. By putting this where you are, you already have a parking situation. You're gonna only add to what's already going on. And I'm asking, if your child or grandchild attended this school, would you feel the same about having a hotel in front of that school? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. All right, next row up? Name and address for the record, please.
Joanna Balderman, 4838 South Netherland Street, that's in Centennial.
Okay.
Hello, I am a teacher at Challenge to Excellence, and I also have two kids that attend Challenge to Excellence. I've taught there for maybe, I don't know, thirteen years, and we've seen a lot of change around there. We've never been opposed to the change, however, the playground is my biggest concern. My daughter, who is going into fourth grade, said, "Do we still have to go out to recess?" Obviously, she's heard conversation about the fact that there could be dangerous people in these apartments, and she's concerned about it. So they, I don't know if you know how close it is, but literally, the parking lot is a tiny, there's a tiny chain link fence, and then this, the playground. So it is right there. I'm also concerned, I want to echo what everybody's been saying about the registered sex offenders, you know, staying in that hotel, the congestion with the traffic. And again, I would like you, I see a lot of you, you look like you have children, to say, would you want your children next to a hotel with a transient population? That could be dangerous. And since I've been there, we have been on lockdown several times. My room is right next to the playground. We've had police out there with dogs and rifles because of situations at the apartment complexes, and I can't imagine how many situations we're gonna have now with a hotel being next door to it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same row? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Matthew Gieling, and I live at 1-875-6-HORSE-CREEK-Street in Parker, over here in Stro Ranch. I have two daughters that attend Challenge to Excellence School. I'm also a small business owner, and I do a lot of business with hotels around Colorado, around the United States. With the hotels that I work with, I know none of them that are next to a school at all. They're all in business districts and things like that. I have nothing against the hotel. I just have a problem with where it's located. I think the safety of our children should always come first. And so I would ask that you would deny the variance for the height, because I know that's what this is about tonight, so, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there, can't tell, is there anyone else in that row? No? Okay, next row? Name and address, please. You guys are probably sick of hearing me say it over and over, but-
It's all right.
Just have to do it. Name and address for the record.
My name's Jocelyn Reimer. I live at 12672 Country Meadows Drive. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for attending, or listening to our comments. I am also a parent at Challenge to Excellence. I'm on the governing council. Professionally, I work in law enforcement. Some of my concerns are, I've seen firsthand, you bring in more people and the crime increases. So there's gonna be an increase in financial crimes, in drug activity, but also in human and sex trafficking. This happens in every single hotel- This happens in every single hotel out there. I've seen it firsthand. I've had an opportunity through work to participate in undercover sex trafficking operations, and it's horrifying, the activity that is being brought into these hotels. So think about that the next time you guys all go to a hotel, you never know what's happening in your room before or after you leave.
I just canceled my last, next vacation.
So this is happening, this is happening, and it will happen in this hotel. So why risk it? Um, there's also an excess of three hundred cars twice a day at drop-off and pickup. If any of you have had any opportunity to, um, drop off or pick up kids at school, you know that it can be kind of a madhouse. So thankfully, the school administration has done a very good job at training the parents to, you know, follow the right routes. Also, Parker Police does a very good job of having officers there, you know, and having an extra set of eyes to keep our kids safe. An excess of three hundred cars as it is, if we are increasing that to bring in more traffic, then that puts our kids at more risk of crossing the street and just walking into the school. So there are a lot of concerns. Why do we want to risk it? Why put our kids at risk? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else in that row? Come on down. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, it's Marielle Frost, and it's two zero one three zero Edinburgh Court. And I wrote something, so I'm going to speed read.
Well, first, first, take a deep breath.
Yes.
All right, now you're set.
I have three children that will be attending C two E next year, a fifth grader, a third grader, and an incoming kindergartner. My family has been at C two E since two thousand twelve, and we will continue to be a C two E family until my son goes to high school in two thousand twenty-six. To say that I have an investment in the well-being of this school would be an understatement. As a decade-long Parker resident, I have seen the town grow and change. Like all communities outside of Denver, we've experienced exceptional economic growth. Fields where prairie dogs once roamed and geese landed for the winter are slowly being covered by storage units, apartment buildings, and car dealerships. And there is never a break in the construction of new homes. We have all benefited from the economic growth of Parker, and I'm not objecting to that, but there is more at stake with the construction of this hotel than economic growth. Have you looked at the proposed location of this hotel closely? It is, for the lack of better wording, hugged up to the playground of Challenge to Excellence. There are no regulations that I know of regarding who a hotel can do business with. Possible guests are not required to show proof that they are not sex offenders. Yet there could be sex offenders staying in a hotel within yards of a school. Not only that, this is a little uncomfortable, but someone could be sitting there naked in the privacy of a hotel room watching over a playground full of children. As uncomfortable as it is for me to make that statement here today, and probably for you to hear that, um, it is a very real possibility. I will also remind everyone that we, of our legal marijuana laws in this state, and that means that drugs could also be part of this scenario. I understand that businesses, whether restaurants, gas stations, or shops, bring in a level of transience, but the difference is their customers cannot be naked and doing drugs while in such close proximity to our children without being arrested. Honestly, what is to stop anyone with a high-powered camera from sitting in a hotel room and taking pictures of our children? We all know where that could lead. This is not okay, it's not okay with me, it's not okay with their father, it's not okay with the administrators, but it's not okay with other parents. It's not okay for those I have mentioned, most of whom are Parker residents that feel the safety of our children is being put at risk for minimal economic gain in the grand scheme of things from a transient population. I would ask that each of you take a moment to ask yourselves if you would be okay with a hotel hovering over the playground of your children's school. Can you, in good conscience, say you would purchase a home knowing your children would attend a school next to a hotel or that you, or that it won't have an effect on the future enrollment of the school? I would ask you to consider that not only would this hotel be dangerously close to Challenge to Excellence and to daycare, but that it would also be located within a mile or two from two other elementary schools, another daycare, and the Parker Rec Center. Not only that, but it is right next to the Cherry Creek Trail, giving backdoor access to all of Parker and into Aurora as well. I am here today to speak for all of those who can't make it because of work obligations or children obligations. I am here today to speak for a community of parents that care about the well-being of our children and the well-being of hundreds and possibly thousands of other people that could be affected by this one development. I urge you to oppose or deny the variance for the, um, adjustment in height. Parker will not lose out economically. Something else can and will be built there, it just shouldn't be a hotel. I sincerely appreciate your time and consideration for what I've had to say. I know that you wouldn't be on the council if you didn't believe in community and civic involvement.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in that first row? No? All right, last opportunity for public comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment at eight twenty-seven P M. A couple of questions that were raised during the, uh, the talk. Um, one thing, just for an edification purpose before we get into actual questions, because it was brought up by the young man in the back. What is use by right, what is, uh, use by special review, and what is a non-permitted use? Um, those things come down to actual zoning law. So just in real basic terminology, any government, any council sitting in any city or town has to follow the laws of that city or town. That's done by ordinances. And the zoning in a community is what tells the development world and the citizens what can and cannot go on a private piece of land. The zoning dictates what is going to be there. A use by right, so the zoning says things that are use by right, use by special review, or a non-permitted use. Use by right means the owner of that property has the legal right to do what that zoning says they can do with that piece of property. So if a piece of property is zoned residential, for instance, the apartments that are right behind it there. If someone wanted to build a Circle K or a Seven-Eleven on that, they couldn't. The, the law would say, this is a residential piece of property, you cannot build a ho, or, or a business on a residential piece of property. That's not a permitted use by that zone. Likewise, if a piece of property is zoned commercial, and someone wants to build a home or apartments on commercial, it's not allowed, it's against the law. So those are pretty straightforward. And then there's the non-permitted use. For instance, in the town of Parker, marijuana retail sales is not a permitted use anywhere in the town of Parker, period. So if you wanted to open a pot retail shop anywhere in Parker, the law, the zoning says that is not allowed, you can't do it, there's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. So in between those two is this use by special review. And the way use by special review says is, is that a piece of property is zoned use by right for certain things, and within those definitions, some of those uses, not all of them, but some of them will also have a use by special review, which requires a little bit higher level of scrutiny. Nine items that have to be met. If those nine items are met by the zoning, then it is a use by right. And if you'll notice, when, when Ryan had the slide up that talked about building height, for instance, it said the use by special review allowable height in that area was, I believe, what, seventy-five feet or?
Yeah, it allows up to seventy-five feet.
Okay, so if requirements are met within that, and in the context of the public hearing, then that becomes a legal right to build there. The biggest challenge with this property is, and, and I lived in Cottonwood when this was built, and we looked at having our kids go to Challenge to Excellence as well, is that where Challenge to Excellence sits is a commercial property. It was zoned originally for commercial property. So you might be asking, well, Mayor, you just gave us a very long and boring definition about what's use by right and what's not. How could you put something there that's not commercial? And that's because there's one little tweak in all of this. And that is it, this Douglas County School District. And this actually applies to one of the other questions or comments made about parking and access. Governments have what's called preemption, which means the Douglas County School District, I'm not knocking them, this is just the reality, they don't have to follow our rules and guidelines for when they build stuff. So when they buy a piece of property and they want to build a school on it, if our zoning in that area says you have to have a hundred parking spaces for the amount of building that you want to do, and you, sir, if you wanted to build a retail establishment there, you would be legally required to put that number of parking spaces, the school district can say, nah, we don't want to do it, and they don't have to. They don't have to follow those same rules. So they, there presents challenges sometimes with access, drop-off, parking, things like that at schools. So that's what kind of brings us into the point of today, to try to clarify what use by right is, use by special review, and non-permitted use. Um, the question was also brought up about denying the downtown hotel. I just want to be clear on that as well. The downtown hotel was a use by right. The difference was, the property owner for that was the town of Parker, not a private individual. So what was voted down that night was the town of Parker selling town of Parker-owned land to a private entity. If that land would have been already owned by a private entity, it being a use by right, it wouldn't have even come in here. It was a use by right. So just to answer those kind of two, now the questions, um, if it could be brought up, the fencing, what kind of demarcation is happening between this project and the school, if any?
Sure, um, from, I'm just going to use my pointer here to illustrate what I'm speaking about. From the, the south property line of, of this property is basically in the middle of the unimproved drive there. Um, from that property line to the hotel, again, this blue box is a not-to-scale representation, is eighty-seven feet. Um, and I did a quick calculation to the Challenge to Excellence Charter School, uh, property line is an extra thirteen feet. So it's a hundred feet, um, from the Challenge to Excellence Charter School playground to the building. Uh, between there is seventeen feet, uh, of Landscape Island, um, that's, that runs pretty much from here to here, along the length, uh, more or less of the entire length of the hotel. Uh, there's trees on there, and, and this is in your packets. Um, and, and by the way, Michael, uh, sent me a presentation that's after, I couldn't get, bring it up on here, and I apologize for that.
It was a Mac, wasn't it?
I don't know, no, yeah. So there's, so there's seventeen feet of sidewalk and landscaping, um, shrubs. There's a fence in there as well, landscape fence. Then you have the drive, of course, and then the parking lot. And then there's about seven, there is actually seven feet of landscaping from, uh, the building to the sidewalk, then the extra five feet of sidewalk. So we have some landscape buffer here as well.
Okay. Counsel, did you have any questions?
Questions, no. Comments?
Okay, before we get to?
So, I?
Uh, public comments already concluded, so. Amy?
Ryan, could you bring up the scale of just the height of the building real quick?
Sure.
Please. So on that one, if we could compare, you said that the Holiday Inn was about fifty-seven feet high, and I believe the Hampton Inn is about sixty-one?
No, sixty-seven.
Or sixty?
The Hampton Inn was taller than this, right?
That's correct, yeah. The, the Holiday Inn is fifty-seven feet high, and the Hampton is sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, okay.
So the, um, the Holiday Inn, uh, so here's fifty-six feet, three inches. The Holiday Inn would go another, uh, you know, nine inches from here, so it would be roughly here.
From that point?
Yeah.
I mean, actually, from this other point, that's just a tower that's unused, there's no windows up there.
That is correct, yeah. And then the, the Hampton Inn, their tallest feature?
I haven't stood in front of the Hampton Inn, so.
Yeah.
It's easier for me to have that perception, you know, before walking into Trappers or somewhere, so.
Sure, the tall, the tallest feature of that building is sixty-seven feet high, this is sixty-four feet, two inches. So it's roughly three feet higher than this.
Okay.
And I, I also wanted to bring something up, if, if, if I may. Uh, you know, I heard some folks speak about traffic on this property. Um, the town, and I'm going to use my pointer again, excuse me. Uh, we are processing site plan applications for commercial development here, uh, for commercial inline buildings here and here. And, uh, with that, we, uh, of course, like we always do, we send it out to traffic engineers to make sure that, um, the traffic, uh, standards are met, and it doesn't create a level of service that's unacceptable. Um, what that determined and what we are requiring is a double left turn lane onto southbound Jordan Road, so, from, on Carlson Lane. So we're creating a double left turn lane here, westbound, onto southbound Jordan Road, uh, to alleviate the traffic situation there, and hopefully help the school. It will improve the level of service there, is what we're told. Um, the roads that will be going in access, drives that will be going through here, will be just, just north of the Loaf and Jug here, will punch all the way through, um, to the Challenge to Excellence Charter Schools, and there'll be accesses here to the hotel as well. Um, and we feel that that will alleviate the traffic as well, um, for the development. So I just, I just wanted to bring that up, so folks brought up some traffic concerns, so.
Okay, all right, um, questions?
Yeah, um, Ryan, I, I hope you have the dates, but I like to kind of walk through when, um, when this area was, uh, zoned for a specific purpose.
Sure.
If anything has changed regarding, um, uses, and when Challenge to Excellence was, was built.
Sure, uh, this parcel was annexed and zoned in nineteen ninety-nine as part of the Fairmark Plan development. Um, and what that did was zone what's called Parcel One. Uh, Parcel One, it zoned Parcel One for commercial uses. Parcel, Parcel One consisted of, I'm going to use my pointer again, uh, pretty much, uh, you know, to the east of Challenge to Excellence Charter School, this, this whole area was zoned commercial. And again, as the mayor brought up, um, you know, Douglas County School District allowed, um, you know, they preempt, you know, town regulations and, um, decided to, to locate in a commercial zone district at that time. I do not know when the school was built, unfortunately.
It was like thirteen years ago or something like that?
Twenty, two thousand and three, I want to say.
Something like that.
Okay.
Two thousand and four, yeah.
But the uses by right would have been available to the founders of the school when they decided to build in a commercial location. Nothing has changed since the building of the commercial.
That's correct.
The school in a commercial location.
That is correct.
Yeah, and I mean, to me, I, I think, you know, not, um, you know, I, I've, I've learned a heck of a lot in my five years here, uh, but being on the, on the other side of it, um, you, you're just kind of confused. And, um, you know, to, to us here, it's a, it's a challenge for, for charter schools as well. Um, you know, I, I've been here thirty-four years. Um, most of the schools are, are put in residential, um, areas, subdivisions. Um, with the, the charter concept, um, they want high-traffic areas. They want commercial sites because they want easy access. They want to attract people from different areas, such as Centennial, such as Castle Rock, such as all parts of Parker. And it's, it's very challenging because, you know, we have, we have zoning, but due to what Mayor Wade said, it's, it's very challenging for us to, to figure out how we can help, um, with the schools kind of coming out of the neighborhoods. So, um, I think that's, that's our challenge here. Um, you know, I, I know it's there, but as Councilmember Rivera was saying, um, when the people wanted to put that, that school there, they knew that they were walking into a commercial site with the uses that we're about to build. Um, so, I mean, I think that's our, that's our issue and, and challenge.
Okay, other questions? No? All right, well, John, did you have anything else to add to that? We'll just go council, go each member down. Renee, anything to add?
When it comes to pro, property rights, it's just important when you're going to be purchasing a home that you understand what is allowed to be built around that home. And it's the same thing when you're deciding where your children are going to go to school, that you understand what is allowed to be built around that school. And that's research and homework that we should all do prior to making any of those commitments.
Mr. Rivera?
I just, I just want to state, it, Challenge to Excellence is, is obviously an excellent school. It's award-winning. Uh, my, my business has, has sponsored your school countless times, and, and I have friends that were previously on your, on your board. This is not a vote against your children. This is a vote of me following the law. And the law that was written when your school was built, you, your founders chose to build in a commercial district. Now, I, I, this is not a, it's not a knock on choice schools and choice versus public schools. But the benefits that choice schools get by building in commercial districts is they get traffic. The downplay is that they're in a commercial district. We can't neuter an entire district because a school got there first. That wouldn't be fair to the other citizens that own the property, and it would be against the law. That is the situation. Now, the gentleman in the back asked, if we vote against the height variance, maybe they'll go away. If you look back at the picture, the heights variance has nothing to do with the occupancy of the building or the height of the stories. It is a facade to break up what would be a very, no offense to hotel builders, a very boring building. boring building, because it's a box. So they, we asked that they put variances in, so it's not so ugly to look at, and those are unoccupied spaces, that's the variance. We're asking them to make it a more pretty building to be put in our town. That's what we're voting on tonight. We're not voting on whether or not a hotel can go here, because we all know, from education from the mayor, it can go here, it can go here since 99. We're voting on whether or not we want a pretty building or a box.
Amy?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, Josh?
No, anything I have to add at this point would just be duplication.
Well, with that, I would entertain further discussion or a motion, please, on item 9C.
Hang on, this went to sleep.
Okay, I'll...
Hang on.
I move to approve the Cherrywood Commercial Subdivision filing number 1, amendment number 3, Lot 3, used by special review based upon staff findings, with three conditions contained in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion from Josh Rivera, and a second from Josh Martin, and bless you to whoever sneezed in the audience. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item up is item number 10. This is ordinance number 1.498 on second reading. This is a bill for an ordinance approving the agreement for purchase and sale of land by and between Kathryn Dakota LLC, Ladonna Langley, and John David Langley, and the town of Parker. And Tom, you are going to lead the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The property subject of the purchase and sale agreement before you this evening is located at the southwest corner of J. Morgan and Stroh Road intersection. The property is currently under the ownership of Kathryn Dakota LLC, which is represented by Ms. Mimi Kutchman, and Ladonna and JD Langley, who are actually with us this evening in the audience. The property was purchased with the intent of operating a horse boarding facility by the owners, which they are currently processing a site plan through Douglas County for that facility. Town staff and the property owners started discussions late last year regarding the future widening of Stroh Road and the extension of J. Morgan Boulevard, which would be, which would require right-of-way on the property that they have purchased. The town will need to acquire approximately 3.1 acres of right-of-way, which is outlined in yellow on this slide. So the Stroh Road right-of-way widening is along this area on the north side of their property, and J. Morgan would be on the eastern side of their property, which is outlined in black on this slide. So again, the right-of-way is yellow. So although the town does not have any immediate plans for these roadway projects, it's likely that the improvements will be required within the foreseeable future. And due to the timing of the property owners processing the site plan and their planned improvements on the property, we felt that this was a reasonable time to enter into negotiations with the property owner, perhaps purchase the right-of-way that would be needed for those roadway improvements. So this agreement includes a number of terms and conditions, however, this slide really only identifies the main terms. This agreement includes a purchase price of $385,000 for a little more than 3.1 acres of land necessary for those roadway improvements I had mentioned. This price includes a payment to the property for the, excuse me, the property owners for the relocation of an existing well that's within the right-of-way of J. Morgan Boulevard. The purchase price also includes tree mitigation funding for some trees and shrubs that will need to be removed as part of improvements that would be going in within the right-of-way. And also, as part of this agreement, the town will be responsible for demolishing the existing home and the structures that are within the right-of-way, which we would undertake later this year if council approves this agreement. So in tandem with this purchase and sale agreement is a license agreement that would allow the property owners to continue to use the proposed right-of-way until such time as the town moves forward with the roadway improvements. The funding for the purchase of the right-of-way has been allocated within the 2017 budget. Staff and the property owners are preparing to close within the next 30 days if approved by town council. And staff recommends the town council approve the ordinance which approves the purchase and sale agreement. And with that, I'll take any questions. As I mentioned previously, a couple of the property owners are with us in the audience this evening, Mr. and Mrs. Langley.
Council, questions? Josh?
So, Tom, just one point of clarification. So, we make this agreement, and they can continue to use that right-of-way until the town needs it. I'm assuming, obviously, that should they end up selling the property before the town was to need that area, that same agreement would fall onto the next property owner as well?
That's actually a pretty good question. I believe the license agreement is just with the current property owners. Mr. Maloney?
That is correct. That's something that could be assigned, though, with the town's consent.
Okay.
So the town would have to consent to any future property owners to use the right-of-way that the town has.
Gotcha, okay, so, okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, Amy, did you have a question?
Nothing else.
John?
I think it's a follow-up to Councilmember Martin, but with this license agreement, they couldn't build any new structures on there, it's just as-is?
As-is. Primarily, they'll be using it as, for grazing land. They do have some landscaping and other improvements that are within the right-of-way that we're not going to be demolishing, that they're going to use. But when the roadway improvements get put in, we'll be relocating the existing fencing and putting it on the right-of-way line. And the site plan that they're processing through the county actually contemplates the roadway improvements.
Other questions? Mr. and Mrs. Langley, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? If you could come down just though, so it's, anyone else in the audience can hear, and then it's on our, it's stored on record. If you could just say your name and address for the record, please.
I'm JD Langley, John David Langley on the record. I've met, the property's at 6484 Stroh Road, just south of here. And we agree with what Tom was saying, it's a pretty good proposal for all sides.
Okay, excellent. I live right there in Stroh as well, so I see it every day as I go out on the trail and all of that. So the house that's actually there at the end of J. Morgan, that's the one that's contemplated for demolition?
That's correct, and there's some structures behind that home and garage that's also going to be demolished.
Because I've always wondered how it got permits to build on top of it, you know...
So did I.
There was, it was always one of those things, excuse me, okay. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Langley?
Any, no, not for Mr. Langley, maybe for, any unforeseen, any asbestos remediation...
So we did a Phase 1 environmental assessment, we hired a consultant to walk through there, and they did their research and revised us with a report, and there are no environmental hazards that they could find during their analysis.
And no fuel storage on the site?
None.
Thank you, sir.
We invite you to come and see us, see what our plans are.
I'm sorry, is it a stable, or are you breeders, or...
Not breeders, it is for boarding and training facility, for mostly dressage horses.
Oh, okay, awesome, thank you. All right, since this is a public hearing, we'll open it up for public comment at 8:50 PM, if there's anyone here to address council on this item. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment at 8:50 PM, and I'll entertain further discussion or a motion, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.498 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Amy, and a second by John. Council, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. With no further business before town council, we will adjourn at 8:50 PM, switch tapes, and then we will reconvene the Parker Authority for Reinvestment meeting in about 30 seconds.